Good evening. I will call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order for Wednesday, August 9, 2017. Will you please all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Chairman Bray is present. Commissioner Kish is present. Commissioner Maloney is present. Commissioner Walters is present. Commissioner Steiner is present. Vice Chairman Barnes is absent. Commissioner Keys is absent. Chairman Bray, we do have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. And with that, can I get a motion to excuse Commissioner Keys and Commissioner Barnes, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the absences of Commissioner Keys and Barnes.
I second.
Been moved by Commissioner Kish, seconded by Commissioner Maloney. Any discussion? All those opposed, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. With that, I would like to deviate slightly, if I can, and I'd like Commissioner Steiner, who is a new commission member here, to just briefly introduce himself and welcome to the commission.
Thank you. My name is Walt Steiner, originally from the Chicago area, moved out here seven years ago, and I live in the Australia Mountain Region.
Thank you. The minutes have been provided, and I will take a motion to approve the July 17, 2017 minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the July 12 minutes.
Been moved by Commissioner Kish, seconded by Commissioner Maloney to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now is the time for citizens who would like to address the Planning and Zoning Commission on any non-agenda items. Any non-agenda items? Are there any white cards, blue cards, whatever color they are tonight? Nope? All right, thank you. At this agenda item number six is disclosure of ex parte communications. Is there any from any of the members? None? All right. We will move into old business. This is item number 7.1, and this is the rezone of a portion of Palm Valley Phase II Final Plan development for the vistas at Palm Valley Final Plan. And with that, Joe will present to us, and I will open the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, can I interject one second prior to Mr. Schmidt's presentation? Excuse me. Just for the benefit of the audience, we have, we do have a quorum tonight. There is five members, and by ordinance, it takes four affirmative votes to recommend approval to the council. So I just want to make sure both the commission is clear on that and the citizens who turned out this evening as well. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. Joe?
Mr. Chairman and commission members, presenting tonight a reconsideration of an item that was previously postponed at the June 14 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. And this is a proposal to change the zoning on a portion of the Palm Valley Phase II planned area development involving approximately 53 acres located at the southwest corner of Litchfield Road and Palm Valley Boulevard. The property is consists presently of two parcels that, well, have been identified as two parcels for the purposes of this proposal. Parcel A is at the immediate southwest corner of Palm Valley Boulevard and Litchfield Road and is currently occupied by four holes of the Palm Valley Golf Club and is zoned golf course open space. Parcel B consists of approximately 21 acres, and it is the closed golf driving range. And that parcel is currently zoned mixed-use commercial, which is the equivalent of a C-2 general commercial district. From the aerial that's displayed, you can see that there's resident golf course and residential uses to the north. And to the east, you have the Palm Valley Golf Club, clubhouse and balance of the golf course, and some commercial and apartment uses. Immediately east of Parcel B are commercial uses such as Marriott Residence Inn and Hampton Inn, and as well as to the south, there are commercial uses, including the Great Hearts Academy and the Liberty Utilities Water Reclamation Facility. And then to the west, you have the Cortile or Camelot Development of single-family residences, more of the golf course, and the Palm Valley Community Center. Oops. The proposed zoning action would be to change the property that's currently zoned golf course open space to urban residential low density, and a small portion, about .6 acres, to urban medium for a model home area that would contain homes on display for the parcel B. There's also a 30-foot open space buffer planned along the southeastern portion of the parcel boundary in this general area. If I can get this hand to stop moving. There we go. Parcel B is being changed from mixed-use commercial to urban residential medium density, and it also has a 30-foot wide open space tract along the boundary between the parcel and the adjacent commercial properties. Touching a little more detail on Parcel A, it's proposed for urban residential low density. The proposed development is for 86 single-family detached homes on minimum lot sizes of 60 by 120 with certain amended development standards, a minor modification of the front setback, 20 feet for a garage being measured from the back of sidewalk versus the front property line. The front setback allowed to go to 10 feet for living forward besides also for side turn garage. The rear setback is proposed to be reduced from 20 feet to 15 feet and a slight adjustment of the maximum lot coverage from 48 percent to 50 percent. The urban residential medium density is only for those five lots near the entrance to the development where there would be model homes for the parcel B. And I'll touch more deeply on parcel B here in a second. The lotting plan shows that four holes of the Lakes Golf Course would, and the putting green lake and the existing restroom would be removed. The remaining 14 holes would be reconfigured as a nine-hole championship course. The existing cart path, which goes through the area, would be relocated in this general area and would be maintained so that the underpass on Litchfield Road would still provide access to the course. The proposal is for two single-story floor plans and two two-story floor plans with three elevations each, and one, as I mentioned, one duplex structure and one triplex structure is proposed within this area for model home purposes near the entrance. And then there is a totlot plan near the center of the parcel in the vicinity of the Palm Valley Boulevard entrance. Parcel B is proposed for a different housing product. It's proposed for a combination of duplex and triplex units on lots that are a minimum of 36 by 106, also with some amended development standards, pretty similar to what was proposed in terms of the front setback for the detached homes. The minimum lot width would be 36 instead of 40 for this level of density, and the minimum lot area would be 3,800 square feet instead of 4,000. The maximum lot coverage would be increased from 50 percent to 65 percent. And as I pointed out before, there's a 30-foot wide landscape buffer along the southeastern, eastern and southeastern boundary of this site. It would contain a total number of single-family dwellings in parcel A and B of 197, with 106 in parcel B. As far as the development plan for this parcel, the driving range improvements, the poles and the netting would be removed except for the three poles at the southwest corner of the site, which have wireless communication facilities mounted on them at the present time. As I mentioned, there'll be 106 single-family units configured in duplexes and triplexes. The triplex will have a single story on each end with a two-story unit in the middle, and it would have two elevations. There is a half-acre totlot proposed in, near the center of the development, and there are 10-foot accessways proposed behind the triplex structures. That's to provide emergency access to the middle triplex unit from the rear. Since the hearing on June 14, there've been some revisions made to the conceptual lands or development plans, and so I just want to touch on those briefly. Lot 69, which was located at the intersection of Palm Valley Boulevard and Litchfield Road, has been deleted by the applicant. Pedestrian access points and paths were added from the cul-de-sacs at between lots 68 and 70, 56 and, oops, 68 and 70 to Palm Valley Boulevard. 56 and 57 is in this vicinity to the cart path to Litchfield Road, and then also in the area between lots 104 and 105. More tree and plant materials were added along the eastern and southern boundaries of the project next to the commercial properties, and a detail was provided in the conceptual landscape plan for the emergency access to be provided to the rear of the triplex lots. Additional lots have been restricted to single-story. They're marked with a blue star on this plan, and you can see that all along Litchfield Road would be single-story homes as well as along Palm Valley Boulevard and the first home here as well in the model complex. Single-story would be restricted as long the western boundary as well, particularly where it is adjacent to the Cortile or Camelot project. As far as infrastructure goes, water and sewer service is provided by Liberty Utilities. The fire department's primary response would be from station number 183 at Avalon and Litchfield Road. Secondary response would be from station number 185 at Pebble Creek Parkway and Clubhouse Drive. And the project is on the edge of the territory within the vicinity of a military airport, so it's not significantly impacted by Luke Air Force Base. It is within the traffic pattern airspace for Phoenix Goodyear Airport, and so standard disclosure statements will be required if the property is, when property is platted. Access to the site would have two access points. The primary access would be from Palm Valley Boulevard, and it would be gated. The project will have private streets. The secondary access point would be by way of a private access easement that extends to the east of Litchfield Road in front of the Palm Valley Montessori School and the Macaroni Grill and the Hampton Inn. It's likely that there'll be some traffic improvements needed at the intersection of the private driveway and Litchfield Road per the traffic impact analysis that's been provided. The developer participation would be set at 16 percent as a proportionate share of the traffic signal cost. There would be restriping of the private driveway at the intersection with Litchfield Road, and there would be a right-turn D cell lane installed for southbound traffic on Litchfield Road at that driveway. Project has 14.13 acres of open space, which is about 26 percent of the site. There's two totlots proposed within the development, and pedestrian access is provided throughout the site and out to Litchfield Road and Palm Valley Boulevard. There's been significant public outreach. The applicant hosted an informal meeting back in October of 2016 and then entered into the formal neighborhood meeting process in connection with an application that was submitted for the proposal. In May of this year, there was the public hearing that was scheduled for May 17, but that was rescheduled to the June 14 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. At that public hearing, five residents from Palm Valley appeared and spoke in opposition to the proposed development, and at the request of the applicant at that meeting, the commission postponed the matter to the meeting tonight. In the meantime, on August 2, the applicant hosted another neighborhood meeting, and about 36 residents attended. The applicant reported that most that attended were generally supportive, although a few registered objections citing loss of the golf course, holes, the quality of housing product, and potential increase in crime and devaluation of homes. Since the June 14 public hearing, a number of comments have been received, and before the meeting, I put a handout in front of you at your places that contained a summary of the comments that have been received. We had gotten, actually, there were six speakers representing five properties at the June 14 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. We have received 10 comments by email in favor of the project. We've received 10 comments by email opposed to the project, three of which were duplicates from the speakers at the June 14 meeting. And then we also got some phone messages. There were seven phone messages, all of which were in opposition, and, but one of which was a duplicate. So that summary is included in your agenda packet. The public hearing, since it was rescheduled and not tabled to a specific date, we followed all of the public notice, minimum public notice requirements for this type of public hearing. And also, I meant to point out that there's a map attached at a little larger scale than what you can see on the slide, but the lots outlined in red are those that we could identify as being opposed to the project, and then the lots that are outlined in bright green are those that had submitted comments in favor of the request. None of the comments or protests that we've received to date fall within the 150-feet distance specified by state statute, which could potentially force an extraordinary vote by the city council. So to this point, there's none to, within that standard. The staff has reviewed the project, and we believe it's consistent with the neighborhood land use designation in the general plan. The proposed single-family uses would be compatible with the surrounding area in terms of land use and density, and the impacts of the additional traffic generated by the project can be mitigated and will be mitigated by certain improvements being required. The project offers a variety of housing product in the form of duplex, triplex buildings, which we don't have a lot of in Goodyear, in addition to standard detached single-family homes at a density that's similar to the surrounding area. The medium-density housing product on the golf driving range can serve as a transition from the lower-density product to the west and the commercial uses along Litchfield Road and McDowell, and would provide additional housing units that can support the commercial activity. So for these reasons, we've recommended to the Planning and Zoning Commission that you, in turn, recommend to the city council, approval of the amendment to the Palm Valley Phase II PAD for the vistas at Palm Valley Final PAD zoning, as described in the final PAD document for this project dated July 27, 2017, and as set forth in the draft ordinance that's attached to your agenda and containing certain stipulations. That concludes my presentation at this point. The applicant is available to provide a presentation, and I would invite him to come up, come forward and do that at this time.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it, and this was good information presenting. All these emails and phone calls and the maps does help us out significantly.
Laney, can you switch presentations?
Thank you. And at this time, I will ask the applicant to come forward and present.
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Brennan Ray, 702 East Osborne, here on behalf of the applicant, Meritage Homes. While the presentation is up on the board, let me just take a minute to certainly appreciate, we're very appreciative and thankful for staff's very thorough presentation, their report. I think Joe has done a great job summarizing our request, and we agree with staff's analysis as they've outlined it, not only in their report but in the presentation tonight. As has been indicated, the proposed, the proposal before you is consistent with the general plan and certainly is appropriate land use for this area when you consider the challenges based on this infill site, which I'll touch on briefly. We're very appreciative of the input that we've received as we've gone along the way. I will talk, and Joe touched on the extensive outreach that we've gone through, but we're certainly appreciative of the feedback that we've received from neighbors, from staff, through three neighborhood meetings, the last planning commission hearing, and other discussions that have taken place along the way. We believe that Meritage has listened to those comments and has addressed those concerns that are within Meritage's control. There's a lot of things that are outside of it, but we believe that we've listened and tried to reflect that, and so we would request this commission's approval to the city council in accordance with staff's recommendation. I'm not going to go through the detail in which Joe made his presentation, but what I would like to do is very briefly touch on a few items just to emphasize. One is, I don't think it can be overstated, the challenges that are faced this site with it being an infill site, and each of these various parcels, Parcell A and B, present unique challenges. Obviously, with Parcel A, as been, as has been discussed, there are four holes that are part of a very struggling course at the Palm Valley Golf Course. Unlike other portions of the golf course, unique to these particular four holes is that no homes front onto this golf course or to these four holes. And certainly, it's an opportunity to develop this site with good, high-quality homes by a good reputable builder. And then when we look at Parcel B, obviously, the driving range that has been closed, there are a number of challenges that are associated with it when it was open in operation, including nets, sliding balls, the typical things that you would expect to have at a driving range. And so again, this opportunity with Parcel B has developed this with what really amount to big homes with high-quality architecture and high-quality details. Very quickly, just to, this is the current and present condition of that golf course, excuse me, of the driving range out there. Want to remind everybody just kind of what we're dealing with as it sits today. So here's the goal. We are trying to create, high-quality develop with 197 homes that will bring additional housing choices to the area. We believe that there's been a considerable amount of thoughtfulness that has gone into this design, as is evidenced on this plan, in terms of buffering and separation from our existing neighbors, not only to the south in Parcel B with the homes on the west and the commercial on the east, but then moving on up as you approach Litchfield Road and Palm Valley Boulevard. As Joe indicated, there's 26 percent open space, and we believe that these additional housings will help to create a more diverse, more robust community that will be better for all. Again, I wanted to emphasize and highlight the high-quality nature. At the last planning commission hearing, there was a question about, about what the corner was going to look like, and so Meritage eliminated a lot there to open it up even more. And this is a perspective of what that corner would look like at Litchfield and Palm Valley. Again, you can see lots of landscaping, lots of detailing in the theme walls, and the desire is to maintain the high quality that's already been established there. Continuing on down Litchfield Road, this is a perspective of what's going on there. And as Joe indicated in the staff report and as we've done since the last neighborhood meeting, additional landscaping is being provided. There is a restriction along there for all of those homes to be limited to one story. The Palm Valley entrance, again, we know that that's important and important field, and again, I can go into as much detail as this commission would like, but that is a representative example of the quality that residents, passersby's, will be able to expect as they travel along Palm Valley Boulevard. I can go into as much detail as this commission would like as it relates to the architecture and the housing plans, but I wanted to show the elevations of the single-family detached that will be in Parcel A to the north to show that there is high-quality architecture. There's lots of materials, plane changes, additional features to make these homes what you would expect in this area. Again, the duplex and the triplex, again, I can go into as much detail as this commission would like on those, but again, I think importantly to note to see is, again, the high quality of the design, of the thoughtfulness, and the appearance certainly from our perspective of it being a big house. These are lifestyle homes. People will choose to live in these. I wanted to highlight the neighborhood outreach that's taking place. You can see it every instance, from our first neighborhood meeting back in August of last year, all the way through the last one that we had just a couple weeks ago. We have tried every way that we know how to notify those people. You can see as you read there the amount of communications that have gone out, including emails that the HOA sent out and blasted to the residents of Phases II and III. But I think at the end of the day, we've listened, we've tried to make changes, and we've certainly made additional commitments and obligations. This slide is intended to reflect those commitments, and I won't go into all the details, but all the color on it reflects the changes that have been made, including the lime-green buffer on the north and maintaining, or excuse me, on the west, north is your, the top of the screen as you're looking up, maintaining that buffer. The purple or lavender represents all the one-story restrictions, including the additional ones out on Litchfield Line and Palm Valley Boulevard. You see a green band around the entire south and east property, and that certainly is an open space buffer. You can see the stipulations that we have, are willing to agree to as it relates to the private drive on Litchfield Road, including one of the other things that was important to the neighbors was, and to the neighbors across from lots 155 and 156, was a solid wall, and so we've accommodated them by placing a solid wall. The balance of the, as you see, is a combination of view fence and solid masonry. And again, we can go into the details in that. I would like, with this commission's permission, to bring up Roger Nelson. I'm not sure where I am on time, how much time I have left, but Roger Nelson is with Golden Buffalo Management. He is the owner and operator of the Palm Valley Golf Course, and he can certainly speak to that, their thoughts and feelings on not only these four holes, but kind of thoughts moving forward as it relates to that. So in a minute, I will bring him up, and we'll put this slide back up, and he can talk about it. But again, the end of the day, the goal is to improve what already exists out there, not only with the redevelopment of these sites, but with the additional changes to the golf course. This slide is a summary, and I won't go through it. There's a whole variety of reasons that, why we think that this is a good thing, that it makes sense. Clearly, it's compatibility with the general plan, and it, from, is good, consistent with good planning principles. We've located the density in the appropriate locations to be able to buffer from the commercial on the south and the existing residential on the east, the thoughtfulness of at the corner, and you can see all those changes that we've made that I've highlighted. So again, I will conclude, and then, time permitting, hopefully Roger will be able to come up and speak as well, but we agree with staff's recommendation. We agree with their analysis. We appreciate their recommendation for approval. We'd like to thank all of the neighbors.
One minute left.
Thank you, Katie. The neighbors that we work with, and I think everyone, as we've gone through this, staff, neighbors, Golden Buffalo, Meritage, and consultants have been working on this for more than a year, to come up with a development that's compatible with the surrounding area. with the surrounding area, that is a benefit, that's better than the status quo, and better than what could exist under the present entitlements. So with that, we would again request this body's recommendation for approval. I may have 30 seconds left, if I'm keeping track of time, and I don't know if this commission would permit Roger to come up now, or if he would like, if we would like him to come up during the public comment section.
My opinion, unless some commissioner feels strongly, is I appreciate Roger coming out. However, the vote is strictly on those homes, and I really would not like to get into discussion of the golf course. So unless a commissioner feels strongly about that, I'd rather just stick to the question at hand.
Fair enough.
Apologize, Roger, thanks for coming out, but I don't want to muddy the waters anymore.
Fair enough, thank you. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and would appreciate the opportunity, presuming neighbors come up and speak, to be able to offer rebuttal.
Thank you. Is there any questions for the applicant at this time? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. At this time, I do have four speaker cards, and we will go through public comment as long as you would like. I ask that, actually, the limit here is three minutes per individual, and when you come to the mic, please identify yourself clearly. State for the record your name and address. So we'll move through the cards I have. If you haven't filled out a card and would like to address the commission, you can do so. Just make sure you, right there in front of Katie is some additional cards. So with that, I will start with David Laskos.
Mr. Chairman, if I just may add, so the residents know what to expect, I will give a 30-second warning, and then let you know when it's time.
Thank you very mu- thank you very much. My name is David Laskos. I live at 14231 West Harvard Street in Goodyear, which is part of what's known as Palm Valley Preserve, where the old cottage is developed, which is directly north of this proposed development. I want to speak in favor of the development, only because, and I know you discussed not bringing the golf course into this, but I live on the golf course. As part of the public meetings, I've always asked the question, what happens if this is not approved by the council, by the city of Goodyear? To Palm Valley's credit, they have said, well, they really don't know, but one of the options is always to close the golf course. Now, we know, and it's a pretty well-common fact, that golf courses are struggling at this point in time. Play is down, and one of the reasons for this development, in fact, is the fact that the golf course is struggling there. The closure of that golf course, if in fact it did get closed, and again, no one said it would, but it's a possibility, it doesn't affect just a small area here. You're looking at affecting five different subdivisions in 161 homes. Those are the homes that directly abut that golf course. If you closed, if the golf course closes, you put those homes in jeopardy of the loss of property value, and, as we've seen in the undeveloped lots in the area, an unsightly backyard for those homes. So I appreciate the fact that the golf course and Meritage have come up with a solution to this. That doesn't mean that six months from now, or five years from now, we won't be standing here talking about another development on the golf course, but at least I believe that it will make the golf course a little more viable, it will improve the area, and certainly will improve the area that we look at, at the driving range, in those adjacent areas around that driving range. Meritage put up some pictures, and I, in fact, have got some pictures for you folks of those areas, of the golf course areas, the old driving range areas, and the adjacent lots, and the condition of those lots, along with some adjacent lots in the area north of, on the north side of the street, where in fact, we have seen overgrowth of weeds and whatever. So for us to put that in jeopardy-
Thirty seconds.
...and have that impact these 161 homes, I believe that this is a good thing. So thank you very much for your time and listening.
Thank you, Mr. Laskos. John Wood.
Good evening. My name is John Wood, 13630 West Lauriata Avenue, in the community of Palm Valley. Good evening, council members.
Good evening.
I oppose this recommendation for several reasons. One, I would have opposed it last year if I was informed. Palm Valley is a community, not just the houses within 500 feet of this proposed zone change. I oppose the higher-density housing on the south section. I believe that was Part B. Something to think about, where are people going to park? Looking at those architectural drawings, there is no space in between those houses to park a vehicle on the street. The houses have single garages, double garages. There are going to be more than just one or two family members living in these multi-density housing units. Other problems I think of are the schools. With all of these new families moving in, are the schools going to be able to handle the new student load? Are they going to have to get new students or new teachers? Teachers are already at a commodity in the state of Arizona. The south exit, something that concerns me, is a sidewalk from the south exit to Litchfield Road. It appears from what I'm understanding is there isn't any sidewalk. Children leaving the higher-density housing units on bicycles or walking to try to go to McDonald's or someplace else, they're going to be walking in the street, or in the brushes, or in the parking lots. That is not safe. Something about a traffic signal coming in at that south exit area, that new traffic signal will be later on, when more density comes through for traffic. Well, that traffic signal is going to be 900 feet north of McDowell Road, which is already a busy area. We've already got the high-density housing apartments directly to the east, on the other side of Litchfield Road. It's going to start looking like Dyser Road with 13 traffic signals within a mile and a half or two miles. It's going to be a traffic nightmare. There's going to be increased traffic in Palm Valley itself.
Thirty seconds.
I'm sorry?
Thirty seconds.
I've got to talk faster. There's already only two gates for ingress egress. That could be a problem with all the houses. The corner picture they showed, beautiful, but without the signal box and the signals on their wonderful picture. North entrance will have a high dense, the higher-density model, so it's not going to be all low-density housing up there at the north entrance. They're going to have the models for the higher-density that is in the south.
Time.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. If we can keep the clapping to a minimum, I would appreciate that. We will move on to, and I apologize, I probably will slaughter this, but Dennis Akman.
Good evening, council members. My name is Dennis Akman. I live at 14487 West Merrill Street. It's in Phase II of Palm Valley. Basically, I'm not going to take a lot of time up here. I just want to say that I support the staff's recommendation. I think Meritage has done a great job in answering people's questions, working with the neighbors, talking with the golf course people, the people who live on the golf course, even the people four to five blocks away. They've answered our questions over there. So I think that you guys have done a good job, and staff's done a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Guy Hatch.
My name is Guy Hatch, 14428 West Edmond Avenue, Palm Valley 3. On the city of Goodyear website, it states to maintain quality of living excellence with the provision of usable space standards to minimize adverse environmental impact on surrounding areas, and to assist in fulfilling the goals, objectives, and policies of the city of Goodyear general plan, and amendments thereto. We bought our home at Palm Valley because of the planned area development final pad, which included the Lakes Golf Course zoning. Goodyear only has 10% land use. Surely, there are other parts of this great city that can accommodate this housing development and stopping this land grab. If the zoning is changed now, the future for the remainder of the Lakes Course is questionable. Changing to a nine-hole championship course, making the course harder to play, to me, is not going to increase revenue, but open the eyes of average players to go elsewhere, maybe at Villa de Paz, where they won a heck of a fight and is there today because of neighbors standing together unafraid. To quote a council member from the last meeting, "Once it's gone, you can't take it back." Why don't the poorest developers make it easier to play, increase the whole diameter for those of us that are not professional golfers? I believe that would be a great hook to bring in more players. The big issue most homeowners have is, if the zoning is not changed, that corner will be a wasteland like Awatuki was. I called Code and Compliance when I first heard about the driving range being blighted. Ms. Bozgeider did not know about the driving range. Gail Bozgeider is the Code and Compliance Officer for Goodyear, and she said, "I can only enforce on property that I see or on issues that have been brought to my attention." Last week, she sent the owners a second and final notice for the driving range. I asked Ms. Bozgeider about the laws the city has implemented for property maintenance. It states on their website, "The city cannot force any person owning, leasing, or otherwise having control of the property to landscape their property. The city does not intervene in aesthetics or landscaping appearances. However, properties must be maintained and free of uncontrolled vegetation. Any person owning or occupying any building or property is required to remove all trash, weeds, refuse, and accumulation of filth and debris from the property." And I asked her about this last line, and would she enforce this last line, and she said, "Absolutely." She even spoke with Joe Schmidt about her stance on this.
Thirty seconds.
"Landscaping and irrigation systems must also be maintained." She said she will enforce this law. This community is desirable. We must keep it desirable. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no further speaker cards, but is there anybody in the audience that would like to address the commission at this time? Turn in your speaker card, and then just announce your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Danny Fulton. Address 2408 North 142nd Drive, Goodyear. I live in the Preserve area. I just want to say that I support the effort. I think that Meritage Homes has gone above and beyond notifying, listening to the neighbors, and working with the people, trying to accommodate any concerns that they have with that. And I just want to say I want to support that and hope that you will do the same in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name's Kurt Ray. I'm from 801 West Azera Lane, Litchfield Park. And I've been a member of Palm Valley Golf Course for five years, and very proud of that. And they've done a nice job there, and I see their concerns on the profitability of the Lakes Course because of the amount of play there, and I think it's a good move to do what they're doing. And I also run a group of men on Wednesdays, and we have 37 guys that have their hands wide open and excited about having this improvement, to have three nine-hole championship courses. And so we definitely support it and hope that you will too. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Kim Anderson with Montessori in the Park, 1832 North Litchfield Road, Goodyear. I'd just like to say that once Meritage recognized our position and how we were going to be affected, they've really tried to reach out. We've worked together on some of the concerns about that access road, helped with putting one stories behind our school so they're not overlooking right into our classroom. We only have about a 20-foot distance with the 30 feet. It puts us about 50 feet from the very back of our building to their wall. I definitely have concerns about the sidewalk. Very concerned about people walking right through our campus, as the hotel guests do today. We have a lot of traffic issues already in our area. With that said, I don't want to see a big, huge commercial property going back there. I don't know how worse the traffic can become in that kind of situation, as opposed to the residents. I just look for Meritage's continued help in giving us comfort and security, that we're not going to have any damage to our property. We haven't had it in seven years, so that's a concern for us. It's just concerns that I'm sure we can work together on, and so I am here in support. Honestly, it scares me because our kids are very, very important right there, and people don't pay attention. So a lot of the stipulations they've added is to help with that safety, but it is scary for us, not going to lie about it, but I think they've done a really good job trying to communicate and trying to help. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for having the hearing. My name's Andy Prince. I live at 14301 West Alverado Drive in Trevesia. I purchased my house back in '04, just before the crash of '08, and I'm one of the probably last survivors. And to see this, and I'm still not back to even, by the way, okay, just really close, but not back to even. See this go through, probably another 20%, I'll lose in my house. And I'd have to probably wait another 10 years, just to break even. So that's the first thing. I'm opposed to this for a couple reasons. I think it's a detriment to this community. It'd be increased traffic. The stores would be more populated, the restaurants, and like previously mentioned, the schools would probably have to build a new school. Where's that going to come from? Property tax? My property tax comes up 15% every year. That's going to be a huge detriment to the existing homeowners. I wasn't disclosed about this possible building development next to my house. I signed probably five, six disclosures. Luke Air Force Base, the Fly Zone, Goodyear Airport, the Fly Zone, an easement for the Water District. I wasn't disclosed that this might be a possible building project. I might not have bought my house if I would have known. And let's see, third, increased crime. It's not medium density, it'd be high-density. Duplexes and truplexes? I mean, right next to our houses right there? Are you kidding? I mean, it's not even close to what's currently there. We're like, I mean, I think the price of houses between the mid-3s to the low-400s. This would be a detriment, and bring the cost of the housing totally down by at least, like I said, 15%. I just think it's not a good, it's not a good value to the community, and I just think in regards to Palm Valley losing money, and they're worried about losing money, I disagree. I think it's baloney, because they suffered the '08 crash. I live right on the golf course. There wasn't anybody out there, but the local community supported it and played it anyways, and they survived that for like four years, and now they can't, they can't survive it now. So, I'm sorry. So I think it's, I think it's just a bunch of greed for Meritage Homes and Palm Valley, and I bought that house because I liked the small 18 holes on both sides, and I think it's not fair to go ahead and just wipe that out like it never existed, and it's just not fair.
Thirty seconds.
That this is going to happen. So like I said, I think it's a detriment to all the existing homeowners. We'd lose another 20% on our houses, and we already lost a ton in the crash of '08. It's just not fair at all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And would you make sure to fill out a card right over there, please? Thank you. You can call them, yeah.
Robert Moreno?
Say good afternoon, but it's actually good evening, huh? Robert Moreno's my name. I'm here regarding the rezoning. I'm steadfast- I'm steadfast opposed to it. It's been sown for light commercial. I'd like to keep it that way. And we don't need another traffic light on Litchfield Road. We're congested enough as it is. I've lived here for 12 years. Lived here, lived here for 12 years. There's plenty of land for the City of Goodyear in which to expand. Just not there. I'm a golfer. I do golf. I golf at that community. They just miss management all the time. And our group calls other places, but that's beside the point. If they want to build somewhere, what's wrong with next door? You've got land all over the place. Why congest our area? The master planning agreement was light commercial. I'd like to keep it that way with all the restaurant rows and make it a real city. You start putting homes in there and it's just not good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments from the public? No further cards? Okay. With that, I will close the public hearing. I appreciate the comments from the public. Appreciate what Meritage Homes has done to try and mitigate the issues that have arisen in this deal. At this time, I will open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners before we move forward with the motion. So is there any discussion or any clarifying questions for staff specifically?
I guess my only question, Commissioner, was earlier you said you would muddy the water with involving the golf courses' input. Considering the viability is one of the issues that is concerning me about the golf course and whether or not we move through with this, I don't know if that's necessarily, it's kind of a sticking point for me. I want to know if this is a last-ditch effort to keep the golf course going or whether or not the golf course can be fine. I just, that's a point that is kind of in my mind is making me go one way or the other, so.
Is there a specific question that maybe Roger could answer for you? Very specific?
Without getting into financial statements and those type of things, I'm more interested in what their vision was for that golf course and what it is moving forward. I coached the Alphia Boys Golf Team, and we're very familiar with that course. So I just want to know what his vision was moving forward.
Roger, would you mind answering that question in a very short amount of time, please?
Not at all. Thank you very much, Roger Nelson, Golden Buffalo Properties. We've owned these two golf courses since Palm, Palm Valley, the Palms and the Lakes since 2010. Without getting too specific, we are modestly successful on the Palms course and the Lakes course, which is the course in question this evening. We lose money every year. And there's a point at which we're at a crossroads. And as a business, as businesspeople, we have to make a determination. What do we do going forward? Do we continue to operate that particular course at a loss? Do we abandon it? Or do we come up with a creative way to reinvigorate and reinvest in the community? And we think that's what we've done with this solution because the championship course that's longer has much more economic viability and has been more successful for us, not only in this location, but in other locations. And it's my belief that this is a win-win-win for the residents, for the city, and for us because this gives, this transaction gives us the ability to reinvigorate a property that is dying. And we can use the money we receive from the transaction to reinvest in large part to improve what's there that's adjacent to the houses that could potentially be impacted. So, that's kind of the, in a nutshell.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roger.
Does that work for you, Commissioner Kish?
That's fine.
Any other specific questions or discussion related to 7.1? All right. I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve, to vote on number 16-210-00005A.
Is there a second?
I'll second. And Mr. Chairman, I need to make a disclosure, if I may. I've not been contacted by anyone in connection with this item, but in the interest of full disclosure, one of the individuals who sent an email in opposition to this goes to the same church that I do. It doesn't affect my ability to cast a reasoned, unbiased decision. I've disclosed this to staff and it's been vetted. I just wanted to make that disclosure.
Thank you, Commissioner Walters. It has been moved by Commissioner Maloney, seconded by Commissioner Walters, to approve, approve 16-2100005A, the rezoning of the PAD. Is there any further discussion?
No.
Seeing none, at this point in time, I'll ask for a roll call vote. Madam Secretary.
Commissioner Kish?
No.
Commissioner Maloney?
Yes.
Commissioner Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Steiner?
Yes.
Chairman Bray?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. By your, what do we have? Four and one against? The motion carries. Just to let all of you know that this will move forward to the City Council, August 28th. Thank you, Joe. So, August 28th, appreciate you participating tonight. You will get another chance to voice your concerns or work through the council at that point in time. So, thank all of you for coming, and I'll give just a few minutes. You're more than welcome to stay through this thrilling meeting, but if you would like to move outside and have discussions, I'd ask you to do so quickly and quietly, please. It brings us to item 8.1, and this is the special use permit to allow the church in C2 District. Alex will be presenting on this issue, and I will open the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the commission, good evening. New Day Church has purchased 1.73 acres at the southeast corner of Litchfield Road and Western Avenue, which consists, which is the old True Value Hardware building, and then the adjacent parking lot that's connected. Churches are required to receive special use permit approval in these districts and the zoning districts, oops. The area shown in red is Zone C2, general commercial, and the rest of the area that they purchased is Zone I1, which is general industrial. The building shell will remain as-is, and if the special use permit is approved, tenant improvement plans will be submitted in order to transform the inside of the building into the church. The parking lot will be fixed up and brought into compliance by the church. There was a traffic study that was conducted and approved by the city's engineering department. And on July 26th, a neighborhood meeting was held at the City of Goodyear Development Services offices. Other than the applicant and myself, no one from the public attended this meeting. And proper notice was given for public hearings, but we've received no public comment to this point or any questions for that. And that being said, staff recommends approval of the special use permit at this location for the church. This concludes my presentation, and the applicant is available. I'd like to invite them up to add on, if they may.
Thank you, Alex. Would the applicant like to address the commission? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Lydia Reyes. 501 East Plaza Circle, Suite 501A, Litchfield Park, Arizona 85340. And I'm representing the church on this project. So we are working on doing the tenant improvements and then submitting all the paperwork that is required for the city. And we are happy to hear that there's no complaints or anything in regards to this. So we are glad that the city and the neighbors are, I guess, happy of having us around. So, and our purpose is to help to create, to help the neighborhood around, so we are happy for that. And then I have a pastor here, so I would like to introduce him as well, and he has some words for us, too, if he wants to pass.
Pastor? Dr. Samuel Faro.
Hi. My name is Samuel Faro, and I'm the pastor of New Day Church. So last year, we purchased this building, and we're really looking forward to use it sometime, hopefully this year still. I got a little worried when we got here today and saw so many people here, and I thought, oh no, what's going on? But obviously, it was about something else. So, we are happy to listen to all the recommendations that were given to us and the staff analysis and report, and we are going to be complying with everything that was recommended, and we're hoping to get a move on that and start, you know, working on all the remodeling that needs to be done. So thank you so much for, you know, hearing us today. God bless you.
Thank you. I don't think, I don't have any speaker cards on this. Is there anybody in the public? No? With that, oh. No, you're fine. You're fine. Just when you're finished, turn it over to Katie, but your name and address, please.
I'm Sonny Gutierrez, and I, 108 East Western and 110 East Western. I'm right in front of, right across the street from the church. And I just wanted to say that I approve of them moving in and kind of excited to see them move forward and, you know, just get it going, you know? I mean, it's going to utilize the facility and, you know, I believe that we could help each other out and really brighten that corner. You know, I did a lot to that corner, and I want to just keep it going. And I'm really excited to actually work with them. Okay? That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. You'll turn that paper into staff, please. Thank you.
Counsel, ready?
No, you're fine. You're fine. We appreciate you coming out. Any further comments from the public? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Is there any discussions or questions for staff on this particular issue? I'll take a motion then.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case number 17350002, special use permit to allow church in C2 District.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Kish, seconded by Commissioner Maloney, to approve the special use permit. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Lot, or, excuse me, agenda item 8.2. This is the amendment to the Palm Valley Crossing Development Guidelines to modify the, applicable to the auto mall freeway pylon sign. And with that, Steve is going to present, and I will open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and commission members. We do have a PAD amendment here for the auto mall sign. The PAD zoning was approved in 1995, and in that zoning, there was an approval for a freeway sign with an electronic message board. We had a PAD amendment in 2004, and that amendment included modifications to your freeway sign. And those modifications included increased height to 80 feet, they added tenant panels, and they also had a new electronic display. And with that modification in 2004 is basically the existing sign here that you see today. That's that configuration. The applicant would like to modify the electronic message display portion of the freeway sign. So that's the changeable, changeable display here, that black portion right there that you see as you drive down the freeway. However, since the signage, the regulations for the signs were adopted through the PAD, any change requires an amendment to that PAD, and thus, it has to go through the public hearing process is why it'll be before you and council. The main change is, well, there's a couple changes. One of the main changes is to go from the single color, kind of that yellow-orange that you see, to a full color display. The applicant is also requesting that that display, that full color display, have moving text and moving images. Otherwise, no changes to the sign, the tenant panels, the height are proposed. It's just to the electronic display. Through our review of this request, staff, we can recommend approval of the change to go from the single color to full color. However, because of state laws governing signage adjacent to a freeway, there are several limitations that staff is proposing on the request. And those limitations were provided in that draft ordinance and within the marked-up development guidelines that were part of the staff report package. And just to go over some of those, basically, they cover a limitation on no moving text and no moving images, so no animation permitted within an electronic display. And again, those standards are per state law, and what they state is, "That message must remain static for at least eight seconds with no more than a two-second transition time. The display must dim at sunset, and then at 11:00 PM to sunrise, then must shut off." And again, we put those standards, we mirrored those standards into the ordinance and the development guidelines, which are July 2017 standards. Notice, because this is a public hearing, staff did complete the notice as required. We have not received any public inquiries on this request. So through our review, we are recommending approval of the change of the PAD amendment. However, we are recommending approval subject to those limitations that we discussed through this presentation and that are written down within the development guidelines, the draft development guidelines marked up by staff. With that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my portion of the presentation. I know the applicant is here and would like to address the commission.
They are here?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Steve. Yes, I'll have the applicant come forward at this time if they would like to address
Thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name's Lee Ferris. I own Fairmont Realty Group here in town, and I also manage the association that's here at Palm Valley Crossings. The, the board, no one from the board was able to make it, so I apologize for that. They're all on vacation, it seems like, so, like everybody else, I think. But anyway, I'd like to, what I'd like to just point out is that the board currently has movement in it. It always has had the movement capabilities in it. If there was an ordinance passed prior to this, we've never been, had it enforced upon us. We're not asking for anything different than what we have currently, the ability to be able to do, other than changing out an obsolete board. The board itself, we cannot buy parts for anymore. We cannot repair it anymore. And one correction I would like to make is, is that the sign, the whole sign is being remodeled. There will be a different look to the sign. I don't see that here. But the whole exterior of the sign, not, not the frame itself is being changed or anything, but we're going to repaint it. We're going to put new panels in it, new LED. or anything, but we're going to repaint it, we're going to put new panels in it, new LED lighting inside of it, and bring it up to a more modern standard. But in order to do anything with the panel, we have to change the complete panel. The cost of the panel is $285,000. And not to be able to use some of the capacity of that panel when we have to compete with everybody else down the road, who does have the ability to be able to do that and have movement in their signs, seems a little difficult for us to quite understand when we already do that with the existing sign. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. I understand that City Attorney is here. I'm guessing that's you. If we have any questions as far as stipulations and legal information, but there is a point, depending on where this conversation goes, that executive session may be needed, so just be aware of that, but I'll open it up to any questions or discussion by the commission. Well, actually, before I do that, do we have, we don't have any cards from the public? Are we from the public? Okay. I will close the public hearing portion of it, and then I'll allow the commission to discuss and have any questions.
So as of now, the sign has movement? And we are trying to add stipulations onto the sign that weren't there before? Is that what I'm hearing, or am I hearing incorrectly?
That is somewhat the case. The sign has had movement. The history of the sign package didn't talk about movement. The city code, which requires message boards, has required for many, many years to be static without changing, without rolling text. I don't think anybody, anybody really was focused on the federal, it's a federal and state law requirement in terms of static messages or requiring intermittent intervals, regularly scheduled intervals in terms of changing signs. So I don't think back when this was approved, there's nothing in the text that talked about this would allow for scrolling. It has been scrolling, they could have been cited, I guess, but, you know, no one was really clued into it until the signs. We've had some state case law, case law come out in terms of the electronic signs, and I guess it's just become a bigger issue. Most of my other advice related to this is legal advice that I have shared, and if you would like to have more discussion about the basis for the position that City Attorney's Office has taken, I'd be happy to discuss it in any session.
One other question. As it stands, we're going to have a motion on the sign approval with stipulation of these amendments. Is that correct?
So, so the motion would be to recommend approval of the amendment to the sign standards in the, in the development standards for the Palm Valley Crossing PAD. The sign standards have incorporated those stipulations, they're already in there.
Okay.
And for clarification, the static is a city ordinance, or is this state statute?
It's both state and federal statute.
State and federal statute?
Yes.
Any other questions? Discussion?
No.
No? Thank you for staying with us. With that, I will move forward with a motion. From any of the commissioners?
Just trying to put it in words. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve amendment of the PAD, of this sign amendment with the staff stipulations put forward in the recommendation. Did I say that correctly? All right, and with the, and to stay legal with the state and federal law.
Yes, sir, you can just say in the ordinance, in the attached ordinance.
In the attached ordinance.
Is there a second?
A second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Kish, Kish, seconded by Commissioner Maloney to approve the amendment to the Palm Valley Crossing Development Guidelines on the freeway sign. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 8.3, this is the PV 303 East South Preliminary Plat, and it looks like Karen will be presenting on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. This is the 43 acres that Sunbelt Holdings has prepared a preliminary plat for at the southeast corner of the 303 and Indian School within the PV 303 PAD. To the east is the Pebble Creek RV Storage Area and their future golf course expansion area. Sunbelt is plating seven parcels. One and two are where the refinery church is going to be built, you had heard that special use permit case, and the rest will be for commercial development. The internal roads, 166th Avenue and Lane, will be private streets built by Sunbelt. And this is just to show you the landscaping improvements that will be done in this section of Indian School. There we go. And on the internal roadways. And because this preliminary plat creates five new parcels for commercial development and the refinery church parcels, because it creates new private streets and it brings utilities to those parcels, because it's consistent with the land use and development standards of the PAD, and is consistent with the city subdivision ordinance, staff is recommending approval, and we ask that you recommend approval as well. And Bob Bambauer is here to speak on behalf of Sunbelt Holdings.
Any just questions for Karen at this time? Bob, would you like to address the commission? Okay. You don't have to. You waited a long time.
Bob Bambauer, Sunbelt Holdings, 200 West Portland, Phoenix, Arizona. Thank you for allowing me to say a couple of things. I would like to correct something on Karen's slide. With the development, we're going to build the 166th Avenue. The church has bought parcels one and two, and they have an option on parcel three. So 166th Lane, which was over on the left side of that drawing, would be then built, depending on what they would do with the different properties. Perfect. There you go. So 166th Avenue, we would build up to where it says West Piccadilly Road. That would serve the church's parcels one and two, and depending on if they do the option to purchase three, we didn't want to build that 166th Lane and have a possibility of it needing to be changed or something different. We do have parcel four in escrow, so our goal is to hopefully get this approved, follow up with the final plat, which is a condition to sell parcel four as well. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Any questions? Any further discussion? All right, I will take a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that this commission approve case number 17-500-00005, recommending that the city council approve the preliminary plat as described in the proposed action and subject to the stipulations paragraphs one and two.
A second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Walters, seconded by Commissioner Kish. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 8.4, this is the preliminary plat for Australia Parcel 9.1, and Steve will be presenting on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission members. This parcel here, 9.1, it's in the Montecito PAD, which is in overall Australia community. That PAD was approved in 2008. It's 22.91 acres designated for a single-family residential development by the PAD. Plats were previously approved for 9.1 back in 2011 and 2013. However, development did not take place on this parcel, and those approvals did expire. However, the applicant would now like to proceed and move forward, and the plat... And this is the plat for 92 lots and 11 tracts. This is basically the same plat that came through in 2011 and 2013. Density is a little over four units per acre. 27% of development is open space, which is 6.33 acres. Typical lot is 52 feet wide by 104 feet deep. Specific home builder has yet to be determined, so we do not have any housing products to provide for the commission tonight. Two points of access are required for subdivision, and we have, those two points will ultimately be here at West Galveston and South 178th Lane. Galveston is existing. 178th Lane, that will be constructed when the parcels to the south develop. So in interim, Baplin is proposing this access easement here, emergency access only. That will be our engineering design guidelines for emergency access, the all-weather access surface. So in interim, you'll have one point here, the second point here, and ultimately, when this one is constructed, then the easement will no longer be needed. Staff is recommending approval. We do find it consistent with the PAD and with our subdivision regulations, so we are recommending approval subject to the 10 stipulations in the staff report. With that, Mr. Chairman, concludes my presentation. Mr. Pete Tyke is here to address the commission if needed.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it. Pete, would you like to address the commission? Any questions for Mr. Tyke?
No.
Then, any questions for Steve?
Yes.
I have a question. Pete, is the builder going to be responsible for putting in the 178th Lane? From Willis Road over? Right, that's one of them, but the other entrance is what, 177th Lane?
78th.
78th?
Thank you. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Eventually, what's going to happen is, the reason Steve pointed out the emergency access here is that there's no development south currently, either in the short term or at this point, probably in the, in the next couple of years. So the plan was to have the emergency access, and then as we develop south, we will, as the developer, bring some access to it through either a main road or a parcel.
Okay, so it's going to be a tie-in to another development?
Correct.
On the south?
Right.
Any other questions for Pete or staff? Thank you, Pete.
Thank you.
With that, I will take a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case number 17500006.
I second.
Moved by Commissioner Kish, seconded by Commissioner Maloney to approve the preliminary plat at Australia Parcel 9.1. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number nine, staff communication.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. As we normally do, just give you an update on some of the actions that the council took that this body recommended, made recommendations on. The first one I'd just like to update you on is the special use permit for the Dollar Cell Storage, which was Ms. Stensky's project. The council approved that on July 17th in accordance with your recommendation and staff stipulations. And then, if you recall at our July meeting as well, the consultant team for the Community Health Park nicknamed, or named Wellspring, they came and did a presentation, an informational presentation to you. They also made a very similar, but a little bit more in-depth presentation to the council, and the council did, in fact, approve the master plan on July 17th as well. So that's moving forward. As you know, I think in, as I alluded to, there is a, essentially, a partnership with the private sector of 501(c)(3) that's been formed to oversee all of that, and so that is governed and operated by that board, and it is moving forward. So it's certainly a great opportunity for the city, and we appreciate you considering and hearing their input at the last meeting. As, just as a reminder, we do have a special meeting coming up next week, so we appreciate your attendance in that. We have a couple of things that we'd like to go over for you, so just to kind of give you a peek behind the curtain. You will be getting a normal agenda, it will be a posted meeting as it's legally required to do and as we normally do. On the agenda for that night is going to be a work session about the creating new residential lot districts, which we affectionately call Project Hip and Trendy in the Office, but for you all and for the council, it has a much more formal name, Creating New Lot Sizes. So Alex and Katie will be delivering you that presentation, so we're looking forward to that. Additionally, we, we're going to be proposing, asking our friends in the Economic Development Department to come just kind of give you a five or 10-minute update on what's going on in, with economic development in the city. We thought that you would appreciate having just an update on what's getting built and sort of interest and things of that nature. Katie and her team are also going to deliver an activity update for you in terms of number of building permits, the level of activity that's going on in the, in the development community, and the numbers and volumes of cases and the percentages of increases and things of that nature. We do have one actual case that we're going to consider as well, which is a small rezoning on a half-an-acre parcel of property up in Indian School in the 303. So we will actually hold an official public meeting, conduct a public hearing as we normally would with any rezoning case. And then finally, that evening, we'll get into some planning commission training. Some of you are longer tenured than others, some, Commissioner Steiners, this is his first meeting out of the box, but we thought it's a good opportunity, training is always important. We, as professionals, strive to have training each and every year. As a matter of fact, many of us have to have, what, 32 hours every two years of training? So we, we're not going to subject you to 32 hours next Wednesday, just to make that clear, but we thought it would be good to go through some training and give you some materials as well, so. We're looking forward to that. It will be part formal meeting and then part work session type meeting where we'll probably have some, have the commission come down to the table so we can all kind of sit around the table together, if that pleases the commission.
If I could, I would request that we do the business first and have it out of the way.
Oh, yes, sir. Absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah. So with that, unless Katie has anything additional to offer, that concludes my remarks, and I thank you for the opportunity.
Look forward to next week's meeting, and I want to say thank you to the staff on all the work on that old business, the Palm Valley situation. I know those are difficult, and people have a lot of interest in it, so I think you all worked very well and handled it professionally in the right manner. So with that, is there any comments from any commissioners? With that, the meeting is adjourned.